Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Glendale City Council Budget Workshop Session of February 1st, 2022. This meeting is called to order. I have our Vice Mayor is here and then Councilmember Ray Melner texted me and said he was calling in. Is he on the phone right now? Mr. Melner?
Yes, Mayor, I'm on.
Very good. Okay, so we're not going to conduct a roll call. If you'll take note of everyone, please. With that said, we'll go ahead and get started. Ms. Barr, if you can introduce item one and only for us.
Fiscal year 2223 Budget Workshop.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Well, today kicks off the first of two scheduled budget workshops on our capital improvement plan. And so with that, we're going to turn it over to our Budget and Finance Director, Lizette Camacho, and our specialists on our capital improvement plan and budget, Amy Lindsay.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. For today's presentation, we're going to cover an overview of the capital improvement plan. We're also going to discuss capital projects for arts, airport, transit, parking lots, landfill, solid waste, wastewater, and water. At the end of the presentation, we'll open it up for city council feedback and questions. Before I move on, I wanted to go over the materials that you have in front of you. You should have a copy of the presentation and you should also have a binder. The binder will have a printout of all the capital projects that we're going to be covering today. There's also tabs for the various project type.
I'll give you my printout. I can give you mine.
I didn't get a binder. That's fine, I got that changed to everybody else.
No, that's mine from last year.
Different. Okay, that could make a difference.
In your binder, the first thing that you should see is a table of contents. Then under that table of contents, you'll have tabs by the various project type. And if you open up the tab for the airport, what you'll see first is a summary of the changes for those projects within that project type. So that change document should have the reason for the change for each project, if there is a change, and also an explanation of the change. Then after that, you should have a summary list of all the projects under that project type, and then a page on the summary of the funding sources for the project type. Then after that, you'll see an individual page for each of the project.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. What does ACIP mean?
It's the Airport Capital Improvement Plan.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
And with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Ms. Lindsay.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, members of the council.
Slides are not moving forward.
Just in conjunction with that, so when it says reflecting changes in the Airport Capital Improvement Plan with FAA and ADOT, does that mean that they're changing their capital plan and that's why we're changing ours?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you.
Not advancing. Anybody from IT can help her out here?
Mayor, members of the council, I can forward the slides now. It's working now.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mayor, members of the council, this first slide kind of goes over the elements of our capital improvement plan. The projects that are included within the capital improvement plan are assets valued at $50,000 or more with a useful life of five or more years. Some examples of capital improvement projects include land, buildings, streets and improvements, plants, and large equipment. We have a 10-year capital improvement plan, but only fiscal years 22 and 23 is adopted as part of the fiscal year 2223 budget. And our financial policy is to first improve existing assets, replace existing assets as needed, and then construct new assets. This slide goes over the funding sources that are included within the capital improvement plan. The first that we're going to discuss today are enterprise funds, water and sewer, which funding comes from geo bonds, revenue bonds, revenue obligations, or cash financing, and debt service paid from future water sewer fee revenue, landfill, which is paid by landfill user fees, and solid waste, which is paid by solid waste user fees. There is some development impact fees in the projects that we'll be discussing today. Those are one-time charges to developers for new development, and they are for new or expanded infrastructure. And another funding source we'll be discussing today are grants, which are federal or state grant funding and often require a match contribution for the project. This next slide of the CIP funding sources are funding sources that we'll be discussing in the next meeting on March 1st. The first of those is pay-as-you-go, which are cash-funded projects. Transportation sales tax, which is the half-cent sales tax that improves service for all modes of transportation. Highway user revenue funds, which is a restricted special revenue fund and can include right-of-way acquisition, construction, maintenance, repair, or reconstruction. And general obligation bonds, which are debt issuance must be authorized by voters. The different categories are streets, public safety, parks, government facilities, open space and trails, libraries, and flood control. And the debt service is paid by secondary property tax. So the report you have in front of you is for fiscal year 23 through 32, does not include fiscal year 22 projects that do not have new appropriation in fiscal year 23 and beyond. So carryover is not included in the report you have in front of you. Those projects with carryover will be added to the CIP in April before the final budget workshop. We will be discussing arts, airport, transit, parking lots, landfill, solid waste, wastewater, and water programs today. And at the meeting on March 1st, we'll discuss drainage, facility maintenance, parks, public safety, and streets. And with that, we'll move into the arts projects. There is one project in the art project, or art project program.
Hold on a second.
Point of order. Airport is listed as... Are you changing the order?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Clark, we changed the order of the slides because arts only has one project, so we were going to have them go first. So that they can... So the first project is the Arts Master Plan, which is a new project for fiscal year 23, and the amount is $100,000 for fiscal year 23.
Mayor, thank you. Go ahead. I realize we're on the capital improvement plan today, but we are on the topic of arts. And so I want to put this in early in the budget process, so perhaps we can be incorporating it as we move forward. You might all recall that back in March, I had an item of special interest regarding money that had been transferred out of the arts fund in years in which the city was tight. And you might also recall in April, you all got a memo from Ms. Camacho regarding that yes, they had gone back and researched, and there was $2 million that had been moved out of the arts fund back in 2010 to the general fund because money was tight. And now that we're at a point where we do have some leeway in our budget, I desperately want the council to consider refunding that money back to the arts fund. And then additionally, I have a question as to whether or not between 2010 and now, have we been funding the arts fund with the 1% of the capital project, or was that suspended? And then therefore, is there money that's not in the arts fund that normally would have been under normal times?
Mayor, members of the council, the 1% arts fund, arts charge is recorded every year. So from 2010 and now, to address your question, yes, they were recorded for the 1% charge.
I'm not sure I understand that. Was the money from the 1% put into the arts fund every year?
Yes, that is correct.
So all we're missing would be the $2 million that was taken out of the arts fund back in 2010, so far as we know at this point?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And I would, again, just to repeat, I'd like the council to consider putting $2 million back into the arts fund from the general fund so that it's funded again and we can move forward with those programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you just covered on one of the previous slides about the carryover. So I just want to make sure, so, for example, in arts, in the last year's CIP, there was $1,245,125 carried over. I mean, obviously, you said it's not being shown. So is that what carryovers not being shown mean they're unallocated for this CIP? Or are we just carrying this money in the arts fund, not using it? I'm not sure I understand. If that comes in at the very last budget meeting, it's kind of late in the day to be trying to figure out what we're going to do with these funds.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov, the assumption with carryover is that because it's a fiscal year 22 project, that that project will be completed within fiscal year 22? If it's not, then we carry that funding over into the upcoming year.
Okay. So the carryover is all allocated to existing projects?
Correct.
But this doesn't show us, I guess, to Councilmember Turner's conversation, this doesn't give us an idea of actually the funds that are available for possible other CIP projects within the arts fund?
Mayor, members of the council, the carryover will be reflected in the draft CIP that city council will adopt in May. So in April, we'll start the calculation and the estimates for the carryover because we're in the middle of the fiscal year. And by the time you adopt the tentative budget, the carryover will be included in that report.
Okay, maybe, Mayor, if I could, maybe I didn't state my question in an understandable way. So if we're allocating, we're continuing to allocate the 1% into the arts fund, then there's some, there's funding available in the arts fund. So where, how do we know, where do we find out as we go through all of these, what funds are available that may not be... There's obviously, if all we're doing right, we're allocating is $100,000 for the Arts Master Plan, then there's other money in here that's going to, that's unallocated. But how much is there? What is in this fund?
What's the balance?
Yeah. And how do we get that information?
Mayor, members of council, again, the carryover is already allocated, and it just means we haven't closed out that contract. We're going to go through the CIP today, and as was mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, we're also going to go through sources of funds. Those, in other words, those sources of funds that'll be identified for CIP don't include the carryover because those are already committed. So when we go into the discussion this morning on the available resources, that does not include the carryover. We're assuming those monies are spent, they just weren't spent in the budget year because of the length of time it takes through the project.
Mayor, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I moved on from the carryover question now. Now I'm asking, as Councilmember Turner pointed out, there's 1% allocated into the arts fund every year, so all we're looking at is $100,000.
I think we can get your answer.
Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, I think your question is about the operating budget as well. So the entire arts fund, we're talking about over $1 million, that $100,000 for the Arts Master Plan is specifically for that project. We do then separately use additional funding out of the arts fund for our operating budget as well, which includes salaries as well as community activities. That includes our grants, that includes other programming.
Okay. Mayor, that clarify?
If I could, because I understand her question. She just wants to know how much money's in the pot. You know, what is there? Not what's already, we know we're going to spend, but what's in the pot?
So for a current, like currently existing right now, like today, what we have in the arts?
It's easier to make a decision if we know earlier than at the very last minute.
Yeah. So what we have, our beginning fund balance, I believe, and you guys can correct me on that, our beginning fund balance for FY 2022 was $1.59 million roughly. And I believe we have expended this year about $148,000 of that, so.
So, Mayor, if I could, so I guess what I'm, so the 1% is just basically part of the overall budget for the arts, including operating, or is it for capital? For, you know, enhancing the art in our community? I guess I don't understand what the intention was of the 1% as well. I, is my understanding that that was for enhancing art in our community and not for the operation of the arts department, but maybe I don't understand.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, so the, we have an ordinance that dictates that 1% and includes the administration of arts as well. And so that's why operating has been included for some time now out of the arts fund as well.
Okay, I'll yield this. I see there's more questions.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions and comments. First, I would have appreciated the carryover amounts listed with the present material that you've given to us. Last year, you did include carryover. This year, you've dropped, including carryover, in this particular budget presentation. I think it would have been very helpful to know what the carryover was. Secondly, I don't think any of us on council have a good idea of how much money there has been in the arts fund, even over the last five years, and what it's been expended for. And thirdly, this year, we will get, going into the arts fund, $353,383, $353,383 from landfill, transit, wastewater, and water going into the arts fund. And next year, 2024, we will get $381,557 from those same four funds. And that's just half the budget. So we are getting, at a minimum, $600,000 a year going in the arts fund. And we have no clue what the balance is, what the money's being used for. And quite frankly, I believe when the resolution was passed for the arts fund, it was for tangible art projects. I don't believe that it included the administrative costs of managing the arts fund. So I would like to see the original resolution that council passed and show me where it says that part of that money will be used for administrative costs for the arts fund. I believe that is a misuse of the fund. The problem is, is we don't know how much money is accrued there each year. We don't know what's being done with it. And there's no opportunity for us to offer any suggestions with regard to projects that we might like to see because we don't have a clue about this particular fund. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clark, I think that's a mischaracterization. A, since I've been your city manager, this is the way we've always used the 1% for the arts. Administration of the arts is a fairly complex and needs a lot of oversight to make sure that the art projects meet criteria. A lot of times, there's matching grant dollars. If the council wants to change the policy, do it, but I don't think it's accurate to indicate that something has been done incorrectly, at least in the six years that I've been here. With regards to the carryover, we've always provided it towards the tail end of the budget for one reason, and let me explain. It's the carryover for the current budget that we're in, not the carryover from the FY 21. What we're talking about is, we're only six months in to implementing the capital improvement plan for the FY 22. It's a little bit premature to be providing an estimation of how much we're going to go through and carry over. Once we get into late April, May, then we have a pretty good idea of when the contracts are going to be completed and going forward. So we've always provided that carryover more towards the end of the budgeting process to give it a more accurate picture. If we did it today, we're only halfway through the capital plan, and it's just too premature to know for sure how much is going to be spent in this budget year versus what we're going to have to carry over to the budget you're now considering, which is the FY 23 budget.
I, Mayor, if I might continue. Thank you, sir, and I respectfully disagree because I have the old budget book in front of me right now. And in it, the very first line is carryover. So you were doing this last year.
But, Mayor, Councilmember, when we get into the operating budget, it's later on in the budget process. What we're talking about is when that was provided as part of our CIP discussion, and we did not provide the carryover early on in the CIP discussion. Again, since I've been city manager, I can't speak prior to that.
Well, all I can tell you is that from the old book, this was the book we were given last year when we started budget discussion. And we were given all of the departments at one time, by the way. We only took half of them at a time, but nevertheless, the budget book we were given last year to begin CIP discussions had the carryover in it. I understand what you're saying.
Councilmember Clark, if you look at the front of your book, it says April.
Says what?
Says April on the front of your book.
Oh, yeah.
So that's what Mr. Phelps is trying to tell you. You will get to it, it's just going to be later.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, just to respond to the operating budget as well for arts, every year when we come to the operating budget that is put before council, when we talk about what that fund balance is, approximately our operating budget, that also includes those community activities, everything from ballet into the stars that I know some of you enjoyed this year, as well as our arts grants come out of that, that's, this year was about $419,000 of that. So that includes the administration, so we'll look at that ordinance, but it also includes programming that is happening. And then anytime there's a capital project, so a large project like Hero's Library is an example, that also comes before council for approval, the entire budget is also approved by the Arts Commission each year. So every year, it goes before the Arts Commission in January for them to tell us as the operating budget that we're going to bring to council as part of our budget. So we do include that each year, just so we make sure we're sharing with council and having your approval for what we spend that money on.
Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So just quickly, if the council decides that we want to change that, whatever was adopted as far as the 1%, we can do that, too. I mean, at some point in the future, we can say, if it's our desire to have those monies be allocated to capital investments in our arts program, we can do that. But my second question is, I'm still confused about the carryover. So what about the 2021 carryover? Because you said the 2022 carryover, but obviously, there's projects that are probably still part of the 2021 CIP that there's going to, so will we be shown that in, Mr. Phelps was talking about, we'll see that the 20, because we're just only six months into 2022, obviously, that fiscal year is still continuing on, but what about 2021? That fiscal year has concluded, so we don't have an idea of the fiscal year that's concluded, what carried over from that fiscal year.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a sequential process, right? And so whatever was left from 2021 was carried over into 2022. So it's already existing, that's what Councilmember Clark is referring to in her book. That's the carryover left from 2021. Before that, it was carried from 2020. Every year, it's carried over. And so at the, nearer the end of this year, in April to May, we'll look at what is left from 19, 20, 21, whatever is left will become part of the 22 carryover, and we'll carry it over into 23. So every year, we do this process, and there's something left. Now, some projects end, that's it, the project is done, we take that remaining balance, if there's any, and it just goes back into fund balance or whatever, and we don't have anything left to carry over. But because it's sequential, every single year, we recalculate it, and it's carrying forward. If the project started in 2019, it'll go from 19 to 20 to 21, however long that project lasts. Does that help clarify?
Behind you. Turn that one off, Jesse. I don't know if that's where the feedback's coming from. Go ahead.
Does that answer the question and help clarify?
I guess it's still confusing for us, Mayor, if I could, because, so we're never, we never actually get a clear picture of what's been finished and, I mean, because the carryover basically is just a lump sum, like by category, right? So, well, I guess...
Mayor, members of the council, no, it goes project by project. It is not a lump sum. It will be, so for example, we'll just take the arts project, or the arts as an example. If there was $1.2 million for projects, and we spend $400,000, there'll be $800,000 left, and we'll carry that over into the next year, plus anything new that is added, and you'll see that in April or May when we do the carryover adjustments. And it'll be project by, each project has its own carryover. It's not a lump sum sitting somewhere. It will be listed project by project.
Okay, well, in the, in the, because I also have last year's book, and it basically just shows a carryover amount and then, and the arts, at least in the arts, and then nothing else. No projects, no anything in the CIP. Just, all that was listed in last year's CIP was the carryover, and nothing, nothing further. So I think that's why we're confused. We just see this, we don't see any projects, we see a carryover, and then we don't see the carryover here. We're a little lost about exactly what's going on with the arts fund.
Again, we can get you more information if you would like to know, you know, a little bit more about the arts fund in particular and what has been spent. We have all of that information. What has been spent, what is programmed to be spent this year. This is the only new project, and then whatever is not spent this year from the project will be carried over. Now, in the case of the arts fund, maybe slightly different because I don't think they're listing specific projects, they kind of come up as they go, as I understand it. But for any other part of the book, if you want to go look at it, you'll see project by project, the amounts that are being proposed now, and in the last year's book, you'll see the carryover, and it is by project.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor. So, you know, let me, so my understanding is this is the easy one, and we're already 25 minutes into it.
That's correct.
Okay, as long as this is the easy one, I just want to make sure. Go ahead.
So I completely understand the rationale, that 110%. Question is, the carryovers, we don't hear from until the, later in the budget, is it beneficial for councilmembers to have that early on, or is it, you can't give it to us because some projects are still not done, and you don't know how much carryover is left?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, that's absolutely correct. If we gave it to you now, it would probably be the entire number again because it's too early, and so we have to wait until those expenditures take place, and then we'll know how much is left or if the project is complete. If we gave it to you right now, it would just be last year's number again.
And then we'd be asking questions, why is it inaccurate?
And then you'd be saying, well, how come this project isn't done, and how come you haven't spent any of it, and it's because it's too early.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear, and that is why, and it is not beneficial for us to have it right now. You can have it, but it won't be accurate. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I mean, for me personally, I would even, I mean, we could, we could see what was in there and what's been allocated. We could see the amount that's, I mean, all these projects have budgets, so we would be able to see, here's, here's the, here's what the carryover was, here's the budget for these five projects, and so we would have at least an idea of where we're going to end up. So for, I mean, for me personally, it would be helpful just to know that, so we could be thinking that there's, you know, there's going to be an extra half a million dollars in the arts, maybe want to do, maybe want to do something with that.
Anyone else? What else did you have?
They're going to, I think they're going to continue and go to the rest of the funds if it's all right.
Okay, well, if we can go two more minutes, we can have 30 minutes on this one item. Okay, go ahead.
The next program that we're going to be discussing is the airport program. The airport program is funded by airport grant funds and transportation sales tax. Its current focus is on pavement maintenance and plans and studies, and with that, I'll turn it over to the Transportation Department.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Glad to be here this morning, representing Transportation Department. I'm Dan Clevinger.
Pull your mic up just a little bit, would you?
Yes, sir. It's better? Okay. Happy to be here this morning to go over the Transportation Department CIP. As interim director, I rely heavily sometimes on my administrators who know their program better than I do. I've asked for them to be prepared to answer any specific questions you do have on our projects. projects for the airport. That would be Carl Newman, our airport administrator, and I apologize, I just want to make sure that, where we're at in the presentation, what's expected of the department, I apologize. We're prepared to answer questions, is there a...
Mayor.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking at your first page, your change page, and, project 20005, airfield lighting preservation. The change, under the change column, it says no change, but that project is gone, it terminated in last year's budget. So my question is, that's not the only one. There's 21006, airport building construction envelope assessment, no change, but that too is gone. And then two more are gone. 2190, east side development, and 40, no, I'm talking funds, sorry about that. 22001 and 22002, east side development and airport design standards, it says no change, but those two were completed in 2022. So I guess my question is, why are they even included on this change page when, I mean, it's not accurate to say no change, those projects were completed? So why are they here?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, Prabha Adibala is our Transportation Planning Administrator. He packaged the CIP together, he's standing behind me, I think he can probably answer those questions.
Mayor, Council, if I understand the question correctly...
Can you pull the mic down a little bit?
If I understand the question correctly, the question is, why...
Why, why did you include projects that actually terminated last year?
I believe the projects are not terminated, but they're in the current fiscal year, and there's no change to the projects.
Mayor, members of the council, we included that project in there, again, for the purpose of the carryover. There may be carryover if the project is not completed this fiscal year, but nothing has changed within that project.
Okay. All right, I find this all very confusing, but continue, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, what you have in front of you right now is a summary of all the projects in the airport. Unless City Council has any specific questions on any of the projects, we can pause here for now to see if you guys have any questions. Otherwise, we'll move forward to the next project type.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I note that there are two new projects, and I would like to know the rationale for adding them in this year's CIP. One would be 23045, and the other one would be 23046, infrastructure bill funding and facilities aesthetic upgrade study. And again, these are new projects, so could I have some explanation as to why they have been added?
Mayor and Council, 23045, infrastructure bill funding is something that was a recent bill, federal bill, that provided funding for all airports within the country, and Glendale-Montsul Airport was identified for $295,000.
I'm having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
The federal, the federal bill that provided infrastructure funding for all airports in the country identified $295,000 for Glendale-Montsul Airport.
And that applies to both projects, or just the first one?
Just the first one.
All right.
23046, the facilities aesthetic upgrade study, the $200,000, that was one of the projects that was, studies that was identified in the strategic plan that was presented to council recently, so this is us adding that as a project.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, I just want to make a suggestion, not just for you, but on this spreadsheet here, with regard to Councilmember Clark's question on why does it say no change, and I think the answer that you provided was, it's a current project, and there's just no change to it. My suggestion would be, because our language is different than staff, and our language, totally different, we speak different language. Would it, I would suggest put down a cell that reads status, so we know it's a current project, that's the status of it, and there's no change to it. Just having no change to it, I can, I can see how Councilmember Clark could be confused, but what does that mean? Just a suggestion going forward, that we have a cell that reads status, it's a current project, or it's a closed project.
Understood, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
I believe transit is next.
Mayor, members of the council, the next project type that we're going to go over is the transit projects, and I'll turn it over to Prab to cover this slide.
That's my point.
Mayor and Council, so this is transit mostly, it has three projects, and two of them are grant-funded. The grant funding for all the projects combined is about 67%, and the transportation, or I'm sorry, transportation sales tax is about 67% of the total projects, and grants is And we have bus stop enhancements, bus fleet replacement, transportation program planning project, which has a general engineering consultant.
I'll take any questions.
I, Mayor, I have a question. On the new project, 22095, transit bus fleet replacement, the explanation of change is, this is an existing bus fleet replacement program, and grant that is new to the CIP. Again, explain to me how this ends up going in here.
Mayor and Council, transit bus purchases are funded 80% by the federal FTA funds, and 20% by transportation sales tax, so countywide sales tax through MAG. The grant also has some operating component to it, like maintenance of the buses for a certain period. So in the past, this grant was identified in the operating budget because of the operating component of it, but because of, biggest portion of it is bus purchases, and they don't happen in the same year, we placed orders, we think we'll get them next year. So for clarity, we thought it was better...
So you just moved it into this, it had been existing in the budget elsewhere under operating?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
You have $260,000 in '23 for bus stop enhancements. Can you talk to us about how you're changing those bus stops to be more conducive to the user and prevent, let's say, urban camping on those?
Mayor and Council, I'll, I'll let Kevin Link speak for that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So back in 2006, US DOT Department of Transportation, they amended their ADA accessibility standards. Basically, the biggest change was, they went from a five-foot landing pad for buses to offload mobility devices to an eight-foot deep pad. So we now, anytime we touch a bus stop, or if I just add a can, I have to ensure that the entire stop is accessible up to ADA standards. So we have approximately 100 and some stops in the city that don't have the eight-foot landing pad, they have the five-foot. So this funding will help us retrofit these pads and extend to get us into ADA compliant. We're not in any danger of being non-compliant with the ADA, because they were existing prior to the 2006 change. But we want to go through, and we want to get all the landing pads up to ADA compliance. As far as the homeless and stuff, some of this funding will also involve installing new, more benches and some shelters, and we're also working on another, some more funding to help with that project, to get some more shade out there, and to get some more benches out there. But we also, the biggest thing is to get all the stops, all 595 stops in the city, totally ADA compliant.
Mayor, if I may, thank you for that explanation. I did read it, I know it's, it's specific to ADA, and it's very important, but going back to my, to my concern is that the existing bus stops are too comfortable, unfortunately, because if we make them uncomfortable, they're also uncomfortable for the general user, but there needs to be something done, and I know Rick St. John worked on, on one across the street here that prevented individuals from laying on them and sleeping on them.
Right.
So I'm asking you to, to work with city manager and our staff to, to find a way to make those still comfortable for the user, but that prevents overnight camping and sleeping in those bus stops. It's happening everywhere, not just...
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, or Vice Mayor Adama, part of this will also be, we've got about 160 benches that are on the street that do not have those vandal bars, so we want to get those retrofitted. That seemed to have helped, I mean, people are still figuring out a way to lay down, but with those vandal bars, that's reduced the number that we've seen sleeping on the benches. That's about a $64,000 cost. So yes, that'll be part of this, to get all the benches that are on the street retrofitted with those vandal bars, so they can't just lay down. But like I said, it's, they'll figure out a way, so we've been working with PD, and they've asked us maybe to look at pulling benches out and removing shelters, but I'm hesitant in doing that, because I don't want to, I don't want to inconvenience our riders that are out there using the stops to catch the, you know, the service, and they have no shade, nowhere to sit. So it's an ongoing, and we're working with PD, and we'll certainly work the manager's office to see what we can do.
So let me be clear, so what I, so just want to be clear, there's a cost of approximately $64,000 to do that. You're saying it's part of the 260 in '23? Or do we...
It'll be phased in, Mayor and Vice Mayor Adama, they'll be phased in over the five-year plan. I'm not saying I'll get all 160 benches done next year. We'll, we'll program the money where we see fit, and work on getting the pads up to where they need to be also as part of this funding and the ongoing funding, but we'll have a plan, and we'll start doing some each year to get those where they need to be, including the benches.
Thank you for that. So let me just, to the council, it's imperative that we do this now. Phasing it in is fine, but if we have 500 stops, we need to do bulks of 100. So if we're going to start working on, if we're going to do some renovations or construction to bring it up to ADA, then now's the time to put the vandal bars, whatever they're called. So I don't know how we request those fundings, but if it's $64,000, then we need to request that today, because we need to have it, we can't wait five, 10-year plan to get those where they need to be. So I'd ask the council to consider adding dollars to, for your staff to put in those bars on those benches, and now would be the time since you're going to be working on.
Mayor?
Yeah, hold on a second. So with the Vice Mayor's statement on homeless folks, yesterday, in fact, I, this did not happen in Glendale, it was in Phoenix, but I noticed a large bus stop, there was probably eight or nine people standing about 15 feet, I don't know what direction it was, to the south, I think it was, waiting for the bus, and there was one guy with all of his shopping carts and all of his stuff, totally set up camp. If we're ever going to make it easier for ridership, that's got to stop, has to. Years ago, I would have, had an opportunity to be in England, and I had noticed while I was over there, that every bus stop, the benches were about this wide. I'm thinking, well, Americans got high knees about this wide, but very, very narrow benches. I mean, they were fine to sit down, but you sure couldn't figure out a way to balance on that thing. And I talked with the director at the time about making it more difficult for people to set up camp, and I know the city started doing that, so I'm glad to see that continue on. But another thing that, that we haven't talked about, that I really think if you're cutting cement, and you're making a pad bigger to be ADA compliant, for whatever reason, bus stops seem to have a big sign on them, it's hard to see, that says, "Hit me here." There's more accidents from people going off the road, hitting bus stops with people sitting, than I think most people really have a clue. I would love to see, if you're cutting that cement at that time, put some metal pipes in the ground, some ballards to protect people sitting there. And I know that you have to be careful that there's wheelchair, all of those other things, but I know it can be done. I don't know why we don't do it. They do it around teller machines, they do it around all sorts of things. Why wouldn't we want to protect people when we're already digging in the dirt, already pouring cement? Not a huge cost, but it's something, what I don't want to do is have people say, well, it's too expensive, and then have somebody die here in Glendale after we've talked about this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with that. We, I mean, we, the current situation of quite a few bus stops around our city are a real detriment to people who need to use the transit, because they're, they don't want to put themselves in that situation. So, I mean, I agree, we've got to find the smaller benches, I agree, and protecting, I mean, I have a friend who had, or a neighbor killed at a bus stop in Tempe just a couple weeks ago. So literally just somebody sitting at a bus stop, and a car hit her and killed her. So we, we've got to, I mean, there, we don't, no more better use of our funds than to, you know, make transit accessible, which is what we want to do, and when somebody's living at the bus stop with a bunch of stuff there, people don't want to use, to just wait there. So, and then also to protect the people waiting for the bus stop. But I did have a question on the CIP, and I do support that we, we find the funds to, at least over the next two years, I mean, I understand we can't do it all right now, but maybe, you know, come up with a two- to three-year plan, that we're going to do a third, a third, a third, or half and half, or however we do it. But I do see that the, the North Glendale Park and Ride, I don't see it in the CIP, in this year's CIP. It was in the last year's CIP, and I thought it was underway, but it's not showing here.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachan, that'll be part of the carryover. We're starting the design phase right now. Our hope is to have that project completed by the end of fiscal '23, so more than likely there will be a carryover from '22 into '23.
Okay, I'm, so if a project is, so the project has started?
The design phase, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's why we're not seeing it here?
We haven't started construction or anything yet. It's, I, we won't get, we won't break ground in construction until fiscal '23, so, but again, those funds will be carried over from the current year.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused, Mayor, because have we not started on the bus stop enhancements, then? Because if we've, I understand, or have we?
No.
We have not started on any bus stop enhancements at all?
No, ma'am. We have no project currently underway with...
So all we're seeing today is stuff that we haven't even started on?
Yes, ma'am, as far as transit goes, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I know that we have about 585 bus stops throughout the city, somewhere around that number, and I think you said that there were approximately 180 stops that had five-foot pads, that at some point will have to be made ADA compliant, to eight-foot pads, but that leaves a whole lot of bus stops that don't have anything, that are dirt, a sign in the dirt. How many of those are still existent within the city?
That are not accessible at all?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, we, if you remember, a couple years ago, we did the FTA project that was funded, and we did 20, 30 stops with that one, or 20 stops, I'm sorry, and then we had a MAG project that we did 10 additional. So, and then now with the Glendale reconstruct project, they have gotten sidewalks as part of that project out west of 9th Avenue. So the number of stops, and along Camelback and Bethany, we had the frontage road issue, so the number of stops that have a pole in the dirt is, I, maybe two or three.
Well, then they're all on Glendale Avenue, and they're all west, they're all east of 83rd.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, yes, ma'am, that was the majority of them. And now with this, our, the reconstruct project, they have installed sidewalks, so now we've got accessibility for those stops. It's a matter of getting the pads in and everything, but there, there might be, I think there's one west of, of Dyers Road, between Dyers and Litchfield, but other than that, there shouldn't be more than one or two anymore that have just a stick, a pole in the dirt.
Because just traveling into City Hall, I can see a lot of stops that are either still dirt, or might have a pad, but no shade, no shelter, no waste paper basket, nothing. And as much as I want to see homelessness prevention, I'd also, if, if our goal is to really increase ridership, we've got to take care of those bus stops that basically still have nothing.
Have no monies.
That has to be done. Then, because... Then, because.
Give me one second.
Those people, and most of them, I will be quite blunt, most of them are in a low socioeconomic demographic area. And those are the people who are most likely to ride the bus. And yet, they have no facilities, no amenities that encourage them to use public transit. So my focus remains, and has always remained, improving those bus stops that are not even comparable to those that have a pad, a shelter, you know, and every, all the bells and whistles. We really need to focus in on that, then go ahead and improve or make changes, but it's inequitable at this point. Thank you, sir. It's not your fault, because it's a council decision and a council policy, but I really do think we need to focus in on those stops that have nothing.
Mr. Phelps?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Just two quick items then. So I want to go back to the north end parking ride lot, which I know we've had some communication on Councilmember Tomachoff. The council approved in the prior CIP that project. And so while you're not seeing it here, it's already been approved and that's why we're in design now, and then we already have authorization, once design is done, to go into construction, but that likely won't happen because of the design, length of time it's taken for design to get completed and then procure a contract, begin construction, there will likely be carryover. Now, let's just say, as an example, that the amount of money previously approved by the council of this project has come up short, then it would be a different process coming forward to the council, get authorization to expend additional money. But at this time, we believe the prior amount already approved for this project is adequate for the completion of the project, but it won't be completed in FY '22. It will be completed in '23. That's why you're not seeing it here, because in our mind, the monies have already been essentially segregated out and allocated to this, and it'll, and then the amount will carry over since we don't complete it in this budget. With regards to the transit issue, I think these are great comments. My thought is, it's likely not going to be strictly a design issue, but it, and it won't strictly be an enforcement, it likely will be both of those. So we'll work with our transit team to look at, you know, one, are there some things with the design of our bus stops which would minimize, you know, kind of the camping element? But it also, you know, there's a certain amount of creativity in terms of setting up camping, and so that's, you know, there's no design that overcomes every creative process. It may be that we have to have like transit police, if you look at Valley Metro, they have their own police force that goes out and helps enforce rules. We may have to look at partnering either with code enforcement or with the police department to do that. So we'll look at it from multiple angles rather than just only as design or just as enforcement, and we'll come back and we can have some discussions at prior adoption of the operating budget.
And with that, we'll move into the parking lot will be the next program that we're going to cover. One of the reasons that we moved this forward in the presentation is, again, it has one project. So the slide that you're seeing in front of you has the one project that's in the parking lot program. The next slide shows the funding source for that particular project, which is the general fund or pay-as-you-go. And with that, we can turn it over to Michelle Wataneko if you have any particular questions about this project.
I'm just, are these, what parking lots are these? Are these like, I mean, obviously city facilities, but parks? Or, I mean, are we like focusing on certain, and how are we prioritizing what we're doing with the $200,000 each year?
Ms. Wataneko?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, current year, we have a study ongoing of all parking lots associated with city property. So it includes parks, facilities. So recently, we just completed Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center and Suaro Ranch Park. At that time, we also got estimates to do the main library and the adult center, and that's why we programmed them in for next year. And we would look at aligning this back with kind of that building asset philosophy where you are business-critical parking lots would be taken care of first, and those would be like those locations I just described. So we've just got plans in for next year right now.
Okay, so as the, as a mayor, if I could, so the funding for the consultant is a carryover, then?
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, the consultant that did the work was funded out of the building maintenance reserve in this current year. So there has been no prior work on this, and we're introducing this as a new project. It should be a programmatic thing where we go and address the parking lots and don't let them deteriorate into poor condition. And that's what we're establishing, is a program to do that.
Okay, and then, Mayor, the, so we're prioritizing then the ones that are in the worst condition first, or the ones that are most heavily used first? Or, that was my second question, is how do we prioritize what we're going to do? Because $200,000 is, when it comes to pavement management, not a whole lot of money, so.
Mayor, councilmembers, we're working very closely with transportation and engineering on this one, kind of following the same thing they did with pavement management, but we prioritize those parking lots that are associated with locations where the public would access them. So it'd be the community centers, Foothills Recreation, the adult center and the main library, and that's why we wanted to address the main library and the adult center. I imagine, you know, the next ones up might be the community centers, the other libraries. This is for addressing the public parking lots, and then we'll get into parks and other things, and we'll do that then in conjunction with Public Recreation Facilities and Special Events Department as well.
Okay, so, Mayor, so parks will be further down the list? Or I guess I'm still trying to understand, it's not necessarily about high number of people, like I would imagine the traffic, and we've seen, I've seen the parking lot at Suaro Ranch Park, I think it was one of the places we went and looked at when we did our parks tour. And I know Suaro Ranch Park is heavily used, so I just, I just want to understand, how are we prioritizing where we're going to, you know, is it going to be based on the number of people who are, who, you know, how busy is the parking lot? Or is it just starting with, you know, I mean, frac is, needs it too, but maybe not as bad as some of the other parking lots around the city, even though that's in my district? I mean, the, I understand the deterior, you know, the longer you wait on pavement, the more expensive it becomes. So I just, I'd like to add a little more information on how we're going to prioritize, if we're moving forward to spending this money, how are we going to prioritize where we start? And then how we, you know, go down the list of, I think probably all of our parking lots need investment, so.
Mr. Phelps, do you like answer that?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council. I'm certainly looking forward to the day when we would say all of our parking lots are properly maintained, where we can then start looking at, how do we do preventative maintenance on those most traveled? We're not in that spot at this point. What we're doing is we're going to be addressing those parking areas used by the public that either create a significant risk to somebody tripping and falling, or if we don't, if we don't make repairs, the deterioration will accelerate and cost us even more money. So again, staff, that's what the, is it a prioritization, just like we're doing with our facilities? We're not, you know, we're trying to address those areas that need the most amount of attention down the road. It will be great, and that's why Michelle has indicated we want to get this into a programming mode, is we want to shift from getting caught up on 10 years of disinvestment in this type of infrastructure and get it to where we can be proactive. And then we can then measure things of the most frequently used, high-traffic areas, we can be more proactive. At this point, we're not there. This is really about, we've got a whole range of parking lots that are in bad shape or need attention throughout the city. This is a matter, the staff will prioritize working with the consultant where we think is the, you know, the best place to start. But this is going to be a multi-year project.
Mayor, and I understand that. So I guess what, and we, I mean, the good news is, you know, based on the presentation and the forecast and everything, we've got money to do things like this. If we spend our money wisely and we show fiscal restraint in some areas, we can address some of these areas that the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost us to catch up. So, so what I'm hearing is that the prioritization is going to be based on condition, then? The ones with the worst condition first? Or, I mean, you said risk too, but obviously the worst, the condition with potholes and loose gravel and things like that create a, you know, a situation where somebody could trip and fall. So is the consultant, you know, I mean, are they doing a spreadsheet and then grading like use, and then coming up with some sort of matrix to decide how are we going to, where are we going to start?
Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, yes, you're correct, and that study's still ongoing, so we don't have those results. We do know that we are addressing those high-risk ones, but it's also based upon usage as well. So we're looking at, you know, parking lots that the public use as being a higher priority than just staff would use. So this is what we have today, and we look forward to coming back with a much larger program on how to address our parking lots in the future.
Okay, Mayor, if I could ask one more question. Based on your experience, is $200,000 even enough to do one parking lot?
Mayor, councilmembers and Councilmember Tomachoff, we recently did Suaro Ranch Park and Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center. We had the consultant price out these two, and for $200,000, we can do the asphalt repairs, the crack seal and seal coating for the main line and the adult center. And we can get that done for $200,000 next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. You know, thus far, we haven't gotten too far in the, in the presentation, but I'm pretty convinced that our staff knows what they're doing. And I feel that the council feels the same way. I feel like we need to take a step back and we need to allow the subject expert, subject matter experts do their work. I trust you when you say you're going to go out and get a consultant. If you're, if you're the subject matter expert and you're going to go out and get a consultant to help you, I commend you for that. You're bringing in someone that has more knowledge. Like I said earlier, we don't speak the same language than staff. We don't know what we're seeing. For example, I just shouted over to Councilmember Turner and said, hey, Suaro Ranch Park lot's really bad. He says, yeah. As bad it looks, it may not be the worst because of what's underlying that we don't know about. And so I'm comfortable taking a seat back, I think we all just need to take a seat back, allow you to do your work, bring that plan back, and then if we feel like we need to reorganize that or reprioritize that, then we do. But I'll tell you right now, I'm very comfortable with the fact that you're the subject matter expert, each and every one of you, and I'm ready to lay back and just, and listen, and then when the time comes, just start reprioritizing that. But you're the expert. Thank you so much.
Mayor? Mayor, I'd like to clarify that I'm not questioning or even saying how, I'm asking, how are we going to prioritize this work? I am asking the subject matter expert how we're prioritizing this, so we have some sort of idea how we're, you know, peeling back the layers of the onion and trying to address these problems at a time. So I, if I, if it came across that I'm telling her how to prioritize, I am not. I'm asking how we're going to prioritize. Thank you, Mayor.
Your turn.
With that, we'll move into the landfill program. The landfill funding source is the Landfill Enterprise Fund, which is funded through user fee revenues. It's focused on programmed vehicle replacements and, which follow industry standard replacement cycles, and are currently forecasted using current pricing and adding a 5% inflationary factor each year. The North Cell landfill project is also included in the capital improvement plan. Its forecast is based on engineer's cost estimate with adding a 3% inflationary factor each year, and includes the North Cell phased construction, the North Cell liner installation, landfill gas extraction system, and stormwater controls. The next slide in front of you lists all the projects that are in the landfill for fiscal year '23 through '32. And, I take that back, the next two slides show all of the landfill projects. And this is, this next slide is the landfill CIP by funding source, which is exclusively funded through the landfill fund. And with that, we can answer any questions you may have about specific projects.
Next.
Okay.
Hold it, hold it.
I do have one question, because I know we've been having some discussions about whether or not we need, we're able to continue on with our, with our plans and our CIP with the current bonding authority that we have. So how far out, like, you know, what fiscal year, based on what we're at, where we're at right now with our authority within the landfill bonding authority and cash on hand and whatever we have, where does, how far out into this CIP does where we're at right now take us?
Mayor, members of the council, as far as the landfill bond authorization, we're planning on issuing bonds for landfill this fiscal year, so fiscal year 2022. We have no plans to issue for landfill for next year, fiscal year 2023, and we're issuing about $4.5 million in fiscal year 2024, and that's when they would run out of their voter authorization.
Okay, so basically the CIP is funded through 2024, then, or?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
The next program that we'll be discussing is the solid waste program. It is exclusively funded through an enterprise fund with user fee revenues. It's focused on programmed vehicle replacements, which follow industry standard replacement cycles and are currently forecasted using current pricing, adding a 5% inflationary factor each year. There's also a project for software process improvement, including the integrated GPS routing system.
Mayor? I'm sorry, I did have a question on slide, what slide is this? The MRF slide 49, is that what that says? Is, I thought, I don't know, is this, is this what we're paying to outsource for this service? I thought we were, I thought our MRF was inoperable and that we were outsourcing this.
Mayor, members of the council, Mike Carr, Field Operations. This is a line item that we're going to use as a placeholder while we evaluate our current operations for materials processing. So what we'll do is evaluate any future options, and then we'll come back to the council for any approval on what we might find in the next fiscal year.
Okay, so that include, Mayor, if I, an assessment basically on whether the MRF is, you know, what would it, we were told that it would take several million dollars to even bring it back up to operational. Is that?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that is correct. We will do an assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have a, I just would like an explanation. Under project 78004, bulk trash equipment residential, under the change column, it says decrease in FY '23, increase in FY '26. But yet, when I looked in the previous year's budget book for FY '23, it shows the same amount of dollars. So I don't understand, I need some clarification. It shows 1.5 million and change. And so both books reflect the same, the same amount, so I, where's the decrease fiscal year '23?
I'm sorry.
What is it?
Mayor, councilmembers, let me catch up with you on the solid waste side. We have, so there was a decrease in FY '23. We.
How much is that decrease?
So this is a cumulative of the FY '23 through FY '32. So what it's showing is that there's another vehicle's been added in the out years, FY '32 as a vehicle replacement, that's part of the pre-programmed schedule replacement cycle. So it's showing you an addition of a vehicle, excuse me, a few vehicles.
And that's explained by the comment increase in fiscal year '26, correct?
Correct. So there's an increase in '26 and then also in the out years into fiscal year '32.
All right, now can you explain the decrease fiscal year '23? What decrease?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, so in FY '22, we were able to purchase two of the rearload vehicles. So from our projection from last year's CIP, we were able to reduce the FY '23 amount by those two vehicle amounts.
By how much?
I do not have a number, the exact number in front of me right here.
I'm going to ask both of you through the chair, please. Okay?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
No, he answered my question as much as he could. Thank you.
Were there any other questions on the solid waste program?
Yeah, none.
All right.
Go ahead. What do you have? Go ahead. Yeah, hold on a sec.
The microphone's off. So we're, our.
So we're, I'm looking at the street sweepers, and we're just replacing, and I hope Councilmember Melner's on the phone, street sweepers. We're not adding any street sweepers or adding any service, we're just replacing.
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tom Chaff, there was a street sweeper purchase in FY '21, and then that's just adding to the replacement cycle, all of our pre-programmed replacement cycles based on industry standards of recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask you a question before you run. On the street sweeper, I know in the past, we've gotten grants, so your department has to put in and ask for that grant. Are we still doing that, and are we still getting those?
Yes, Mayor, we have programmed to pay the full amount, but we are gonna be seeking grant funding for that sweeper.
Great, good job. Mayor? Go ahead.
On the subject of the street sweepers and street sweeping, I do wanna say, take a moment to say that I've received from several of my residents positive feedback about the enhanced street sweeping schedule and the timing of it being right after bulk trash pickup. Residents notice this sort of thing, and they do appreciate it. It's kinda part of what makes living in their own neighborhood a little bit better for them. So they're noticing, and I appreciate the council having supported this request in the past. Thank you.
Anything else?
With that, we'll move into water services. The Water Services CIP overview includes their planned priorities, which are provide continuous service with minimum unplanned disruptions, provide multiple water supply sources, replace and rehabilitate existing infrastructure, reduce emergency repair costs, and meet all federal and state regulations. The wastewater CIP overview includes major projects for fiscal year '23 through '27, which are rehabilitate sewer lines, manholes, and lift stations, rehabilitate West Area Water Reclamation Facility, and the 91st Avenue Wastewater Treatment Plant. The funding sources within the wastewater program are the sewer fund and sewer development impact fees.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I wanna go back to water for a minute. I noticed that there are new projects that have been added in the water CIP, and I'd like to know again why they've been added. There's Project 23008, which is a water meter data collection system, and then 23009, which is a roof replacement water. So these are brand-new projects that have been added, and could you tell me why they have been added? And then 23011, Water Development Infrastructure is another new project.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. First question is the new projects for the water meter data collection. Councilmember Clark, that's our new AMI Program Manager project that's coming forward. We just awarded that two weeks ago, and using contingency funds, and then we'll let that Program Manager then decide for us how our new capital program for AMI is going to take place for in the future.
What does AMI stand for?
Automatic Meter Infrastructure.
Okay. And then 23009, Roof Replacement Water.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, this year is something new. Facilities did assessments on our roofs for water and wastewater facilities. So that, that new project, as well as one for the water facilities, was presented to us by Facilities, and so we put it in as a project in the capital program for roof maintenance and replacement.
And then 23011.
23011, let me, let me back up a minute on that. DIF. This year, over about the 10-year program, we've got about $21 million that we see is coming into the city with DIF, and that's because of all of our development through here. So we put together this project, and that project is, give me that number again. That project is for taking care of any DIF projects for line extensions or install of water or sewer lines needed to support development. So we took that project, and we basically replaced it, replaced our line extensions or our sewer line extensions project with that new line item. So the DIF then will go as the funding source for that project right there.
Okay, I'm confused, so I'm gonna, Mayor, if I might continue. So I'm gonna ask a couple of questions about this. It's my understanding, most of the DIF we're getting is from development around the Loop Yet that's served by, I believe, Epcore and perhaps one other water company, and we have a policy that we're not extending beyond 115th Avenue. So exactly, where will this DIF be used?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I need to defer to budget and finance on your spreadsheet you put together for the DIF for us. That's what I'm referring to.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have that information in front of me, but we can certainly send that to City Council.
Okay, because I think when you talk about 20 million in DIF, it's mostly coming from west of 115th Avenue. So my question is, where are we using it, and are we using this DIF appropriately associated with the area from which the funds are coming?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, let me ask a question here of my staff. Dan, that DIF for both water and wastewater that you've listed on that sheet?
We do not collect revenue west of...
Yeah, I didn't think so.
No, that's right. But those numbers do not include revenue west of 115.
115.
So that 21 million is for everything east of 115.
Yeah.
Mayor, members of council, if you look on the CIP sheets, on that last sheet, let me see if I can give you a page number for that.
While you're doing that, I'm gonna have Mr. Phelps speak.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Clark, councilmembers, the, we do not collect water DIF fees west of 115.
Right.
All of these projects are for DIF monies collected for water that can be used in other parts of the city. So there's no, you know, we're not, none of these projects that are here are for extension of water lines or sewer lines in like Epcore service territory, whatever. This is DIF fees collected within our water service area, going back into DIF projects for our water service area.
That's, Mayor, thank you. That's what I wanted clarification about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Were there any questions on the wastewater program?
Hold on.
I have a question while they're getting ready. Three or four years ago, a gentleman had come to me, and I referred him to you folks, and he had a process that aereated and had microbubbles or something that was a process in wastewater. And there was supposed to be a little pilot program they were gonna test. Do you know if that ever happened, and if it did, are we, are we using that, or did that prove not to be successful?
Mayor, I've got an expert here that can help me answer that. Ron?
Good morning, Mayor. I do recall that meeting that we had. The individual, we did identify a project for them to test that technology on, and they chose not to do it. They wanted to do something much bigger than that, so they elected not to do that. So we haven't moved forward with it.
Okay, I was just curious, because at the time, it was supposed to be a cost savings of chemicals and all sorts of things, and I never heard back, so I didn't know what happened.
Yeah.
But I figure it this way, if what they said they could accomplish, if they could've done it, that would've been fantastic.
Yes.
But if they didn't follow through, then I guess that sort of tells us, yeah, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, I have some questions. With regard to Project 22076, Sewer Line Rehab Program, I noticed that the grand total amount, excuse me, that's, I'm identifying the wrong project. Go to 63003, 99th Avenue Interceptor Line. Grand total is now around $5 million. The grand total has decreased substantially over last year. Last year, it was $27 million. It was, the total was around $32 million. Now the grand total is down to $5 million. What has happened to cause that dramatic decrease of $27 million for the interceptor That's over the life of the program, the CIP, grand total.
Ron, do you have some information on that?
It's Project 63003, 99th Avenue Interceptor Line, on page 65.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I, this is an increase to the budget. This is the change, so this isn't the total dollar amount for that project. And specifically, the, we get these costs. Phoenix, the city of Phoenix is responsible for maintaining the sewer line, the 99th Avenue Interceptor. So they do assessments, and they have consultants identify what the costs are moving forward, and they provide that to us on a regular basis, and we program, program that into our budget to fund our share of that project.
Okay, so that...
It's not a decrease overall, it's an addition to what's already been anticipated to spend.
Yes.
That's, that's what I was going to clarify, that the $5 million is an increase to the program.
Correct.
All right, thank you. And then I have one, Mayor.
Yeah.
I have one final question. We've got a new project, 23012, Sewer Development Infrastructure. That's a new project. Could you tell me what it is? It's on page 78, I believe. Could you tell me why? It just, your justification is provide funding for oversizing and expansion of sewer line for new development. What exactly are you talking about?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, that's what, this is the project we were referring to on your first question about the DIF and sewer line extensions. This, this area is over in the area south of the Cardinal Stadium, and then also it has to do with the relief sewer in 91st Avenue that we talked about last year in the CIP. So these are the two projects that this, that the funding from this will support, and this is, of course, this is also DIF money also.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I realize we just had moved on to wastewater, but I remembered a question I had about water. On the, on the page right after the tab, project number 22072, I believe it is? Nope, 22075, Ballpark Boulevard Water, Water Line Extension, Million Five Reduction, project deleted. Can you tell us what happened there?
What was that number again, sir?
Yes, 22075.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that project in Ballpark Boulevard, the water and line and sewer line that's in, that's been installed already in Ballpark Boulevard, is completed, so we don't have that, we don't have that project in here now, because it's, it was, that part of it was completed.
Was it in the CIP twice, and we've deleted one? Or is this a million five left over after the completion of the project? Do you help me with that, please?
Mayor, members of the council, if there were savings in the, in the budget for that project, it would go back to fund balance in the water and wastewater fund.
Dan?
If there were, I'm just, I just wanna know.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that project is completed. We did need those funds, so they do go back.
Okay, that was excess money that returns?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the project's completed, not deleted?
That portion of, that particular project portion that we were responsible for, for paying for, is complete.
Okay, the, all right, so our note says it was deleted. More accurately, it was completed. The water line is in Ballpark Boulevard. There's a million and a half left over that goes back to Water Services Fund. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions on wastewater, we can go through just the overview for the water projects. The major water, water projects for '23 through '27 include rehabilitating water treatment plants, rehabilitating water lines, valves, and reservoirs, drill and equipment groundwater wells, acquire White Mountain Apache Tribe water rights, and rehabilitate groundwater wells. And the two funding sources within the water CIP are the water fund and water development impact fees. This next slide, and actually, the next two slides show all of the projects within the water CIP. And if there are any questions on those particular projects, we can turn those over to Mr. Johnson.
That concludes the presentation and the capital improvement plan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Phelps to do some closing remarks.
Mayor, members of council, again, it's still an opportunity if you have any further questions on any of the presentation. However, in preparation for the next CIP workshop, we'll be talking more about general fund projects and pay-as-you-go projects, and this would be a good opportunity if councilmembers, based on changing circumstances, have some changes in priority. What I, you know, I think would be helpful for staff is for us to, if you, if maybe before there was a priority to spend in a certain area, but either that's been satisfactory completed, or it's no longer a high priority. Here in the, several weeks prior to the next workshop, great opportunity to say, in my district, looking at it from a district perspective, here are some of the priorities that, that maybe are a little bit different that we've communicated in past years, that allow staff to kind of put those all together as we move forward. I think that'll be helpful as we have kind of that discussion and the things that are more now, you know, which would be things like park projects, other kinds of facility projects. So just, we've got plenty of time to do it. If you wanna just route them, you know, through my office, and we'll make sure staff gets distributed to staff.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelps, thank you for that. So most recently, I didn't, I was given not the greatest bill of health, I'm doing well, but could be a little more enthusiastic about exercise. So a doctor says I need to exercise a little more. Yeah. Well, with that said, I have a little more access than, than, than those in my district, and so I, I feel that we need to start to have a healthier Glendale. Yes, specific to the district, but Glendale-wide. We need to have a new health and wellness, fitness initiative in Glendale, specific to the district I'll speak to. We don't, our youth and our adults and our elderly don't have the typical access that one does to those fitness centers. I think we can do better. I think we can eat better. I think we can exercise more. But if the city of Glendale isn't participating in that, then that goes, those families go without those, those needs to exercise more. I'd like to start, I'd like for your team to look into a health, wellness, and fitness initiative to include a fitness center. That, that would mean we would need an existing building or something that the city already owns. That could be centralized. That could be centralized in downtown Glendale. But again, that's not, the initiative isn't just for the district. It's Glendale-wide. We need to have an initiative that makes Glendale a little healthier. I'd like for you to look into that and I'd like to meet with you some ideas I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelps, I would like to clarify, make sure I understand what you said. You're asking us for a list of our district priorities and to submit them to you formally? Is that what I heard?
Mayor, members of the council, we've developed, obviously, a good understanding. We think of what the priorities have been to date. I would say focus on things that were changed. You know, if, for example, you don't need to remind us that you would like to see perhaps an aquatics facility at Heroes.
I can't pass that up.
So I don't think you would need to let us know that. However, if you wanted to shock everybody at the dais and say that's no longer a priority, then that would also be the time to do that. No, I think this is really more of the fine tuning of your priorities. There may be some newer things that have happened. We've come out of a pandemic, as Councilmember Aldama, or Vice Mayor Aldama just referenced. I mean, you know, maybe what's happened over the last two years is kind of refocused a priority for his district. So I would just say if you've got things within your district that have, that are different than what we've been led to believe to be the priority, let's communicate that so we can start making sure that we've got a CIP that's aligned with your priorities.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of things. First of all, though, on the White Mountain Apache water rights, I'm just curious, the total amount in the CIP is the same, but the distribution has been slowed down. In last year's CIP, we had $3.5 million in fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, $3.5 million. And this shows $3.5 million in fiscal year '24 and then $875,000 in years '25, '26, '27. And then, and then at least, I guess, 28, 875. So I'm just curious what the reasoning would be for spreading that out over a longer period of time.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, they require 50% upfront and then we can distribute the rest of it over those next four years. So I think it helps us on our, on our fund liability and to make sure that we don't put all $7 million in one year. And also as an update for you, they're saying now that we're looking at probably starting this project, although we've been carrying it for a number of years, as you guys know, probably '25 is when they may come to us for actual initiation of lease.
Okay. That's excellent news. Thank you, Mayor. And I did have one other thing. I mean, we have, we're not, we're not talking about it today, but we do have a fitness center, aquatic center, all of that in our CIP in this part of the city. Been programmed for Heroes Park for many years now. So I'm anxious to see that come to fruition. Councilmember Clark's well aware that I have her back on this to get this done. I think the citizens in this part of the city have waited a long time and are deserving of amenities that should be available to residents citywide in Glendale. So, you know, rather than, at least from my perspective, starting to talk about some other project that we're going to put in the CIP, we look at getting Heroes Park Facility and Aquatic Center delivered to the residents that they've been waiting for such a long time for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else from you? No? Okay. Very quickly, I'm sort of going to take a chairman's prerogative here, report to the council real quick what happened yesterday. This is only for your information. I went down to the House Representatives, met with Mr. Kavanaugh, and then immediately after that, had a meeting in the Transportation Committee on Prop 400. Testified on a couple of different bills. But when we finished, we had a unanimous vote supporting Prop 400 in the Senate side. That doesn't mean that it's a done deal. There's work to do. There was three or four different organizations that testified against it. I tried to speak on the good parts of it. And then we will have to do some negotiation there, no doubt. The House side, I will go back, I know Ryan's in, I believe it's Thursday, I have to go back to the House and testify in their Transportation Committee. We're running two parallel bills. It does have an emergency clause. And we're going to have to do some negotiation. But I think we've done a really good job. I think Ryan, our intergov, has done a fantastic job. And I just want to let everybody know that he's working actively on that, along with all of the other cities in Maricopa County. So good news yesterday. It's not a done deal, but we're going to keep fighting that fight and hopefully we can get Prop 400 to where it goes to the voters and then the voters will make that final decision.
Mayor, can I ask you? Since you were down there yesterday, I read that the fireworks bill made it through that committee as well with unanimous approval.
I was not, I was going the other direction. So what bill was happening in the House, I was in the Senate.
That's awesome, though. I mean, that's another bill that, you know, we signed on to, that we want to, you know, limit the hours of use for fireworks and that that, that made, at least made it out of the committee with bipartisan support, which is very good news.
And obviously, if you're not familiar with the process down there, it still has to go for second read, third read, it has to go to a committee of the whole. And then, of course, pass whatever house it's in and then go to the opposite house for the whole process to start over again. Both of those bills are going to have some processes that are going to happen, negotiations are going to happen. But with the emergency clause, it requires two-thirds vote. It's critical that we get that this year. It has to go to, on the ballot for November, or it's going to set us back. And I don't think any of us are willing to jeopardize our economic development that we've been able to accomplish, everything that Economic Development Team has done. Without those freeways, that's just a killer for the Valley. So I just want to make that report to everybody. We're working real hard. But if you see Ryan Lee, basically pat him on the back, tell him good job. With that, if there's nothing else from this council.